Dr. Grimes, a second by Mrs. Hoyes, all in favor? Unanimous? All right, welcome. We're gonna go ahead and stand for the pledge if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will pause for a moment of silent reflection. All right, welcome, everybody. It's good to see all of you here for a work session, which are usually not heavily attended, so thanks for joining us. I'd like to welcome up Dr. Josh Lowe, our number one presenter here at the Board of Ed for new principals and assistant principals. Yes, yes, yes.
All right, good evening, everyone. We're excited to recognize our new leaders, new principals, new assistant principals. And before we get to some very important people, and that is some of our retiring principals that are here tonight. So going, I'm a little taller than the last person. There we go. Going, we'll go alphabetically with this, so we'd love to recognize our new principals for the coming school year. So from Mashburn Elementary, Abby Gaines. Brookwood Elementary, Angela Perry. And Riverwatch Middle School, Kimberly White. All right, congratulations. Now, we have a very important group to recognize as well, our new assistant principals. And we'll go alphabetically first. From North Forsyth High School, Brian Bradley. Midway Elementary, Jeremy Combs. South Forsyth High School, Nicole Espy. All right, from Hall Creek, Berkeley Fane. North Forsyth Middle School, Mary Garner. DeSanna Middle School, Alan Garrish. Liberty Middle School, Jared Hawkins. Sony Elementary, Wendy Heckenberg. Chesta T. Elementary, Brianna Hunt. Riverwatch Middle School, Mary Beth Jaeger. Hendrix Middle School, Katie James. Congratulations. Lambert High School, Joel Posey. All right, ACE, Amber Still. Sharon Elementary, Kami White. The South Forsyth Middle School, Lisa White. All right. Congrats. And that is our list for new assistant principals. Y'all wanna come down and get a photo with our board? All right, and as they head back to their seats, we have one more group to recognize, and that is our retiring FCS principals for this school year. Going alphabetically once again, from Raider Nation, Bob Conroly. All right, go ahead, Bob. Grab a picture. All right, and from Mashburn Elementary, Steve Miller. All right, and one more retiree who wasn't able to be with us tonight, Ms. Tracy Smith from Kelly Mills. So we need to give her a round of applause and congratulations. Thank y'all.
All right, next up is All in Education with Mr. Mike Evans.
AI, not all. My glasses, guys. Or all. Perfect. Well, this is a great transition, because as we're transitioning from the legacy of education from retirees, we're now transitioning to the future of education with an update on the artificial intelligence within the school system. So before I turn it over to Jason, I've got a couple little bits of information. Number one is really the alignment. When we're looking at artificial intelligence and how that might impact education, again, it fits in so nicely with our strategic plan, our learning profile as well. And it also coincides with the federal level, because recently, there was an executive order to establish an AI or White House AI Task Force to focus on education. The interesting side of that, it really emphasizes the need to, as it mentions here, cultivate the skills in the youth, needing, making sure that they're understanding the impact that it's gonna have on their life as they're going forward, because it really is a transforming aspect. So the executive order also touches on a couple areas. Number one is making sure that we're educating our students around the effective use of artificial intelligence, but also investing in our educators. So training, development that comes along with that one. And we're gonna get into that of where we stand within here in Forsyth County. Just a little bit of information. I know everyone's really aware of the impacts of AI. But when you look at the chart on the left-hand side, the adoption rate of ChatGPT of five days to reach 1 million users, and you're looking at that compared to all the other technologies that are listed here. It has such a profound impact and how quickly this has been adopted. Even over the years, a year ago, the industry was saying that careers need to be investing in prompt engineering, the ability for those to be able to write the prompts to train AI to create the responses that they need. Well, a year later, to current day, AI is already doing that job for them. Google, right now, Google, 25% of Google's code base is written in AI. The example down here of Droplet on the bottom, Droplet's an application that we use for form processing and routing of forms. They added an AI component into it. It's code-based, so if I knew the code, I could create the forms myself. But they added an AI component to it. So all I have to do is tell it the specific fields that I want. And down below, you can see where it actually is already generating the code for it as well. So in just everyday usage of what I'm seeing, it's already making a transformative impact as well. And again, over time, looking at the fastest-growing jobs through '25 to '2030, AI and machine learning is already the third highest. And when you look through all these other applications or all these other jobs, AI is really embedded within all of them. So the conversation has shifted from AI replacing jobs to really AI being able to enhance and transform the current jobs. Now, there will be some conversations about that, but it's really on how people can utilize AI within their current job for efficiencies, performances. And we're already looking at different ways that we can do that within the school system as well. So right now, I'm gonna turn it over to Jason L. Jason's our Director of Educational Technology and Media. Jason has done an incredible job, really, from when ChatGPT came out a couple years ago and us realizing as a school system, we need to be on top of this and start making investments in how we guide the teachers, guide the students as well. So Jason's gonna walk you through the timeline of what we've done and really give you an update on the work that we've done specifically this past year, where we've expanded the user groups to get feedback from a whole variety of stakeholders. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jason.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you for the opportunity to be here and share the work that we've been doing over the last few months. So first, I'm gonna give you a quick review of kind of the timeline and what we've done. I'm gonna tell you a little bit about our FCS AI and education team that we put together, share with you work in progress, and then also our next steps. So as Mike noted, really, the first step in bringing AI to kind of our, the end-users, was taken back in late 2022 when ChatGPT was released and really made AI more accessible for everyone. We quickly saw that had the opportunity to be very, have an impact on our schools and our classrooms, our teachers and our students, and bring about a level of disruption potentially. So we formed a working group of teachers, ed tech coaches, and instructional coaches, along with our district office staff. We really wanted to hear from our school-based personnel, to hear what they were seeing in the classrooms, from their teachers, from their students. And we also wanted to have a dialogue with them from our side to be able to share what we were hearing from our vendors and the different applications that were coming onboard. So two things that we immediately did, before we're back to school in 2023, we added some language to our family engagement guide that provided guidance on AI use and academic integrity surrounding that. And we also provided some initial guidance to our schools, our ETCs, and our teachers on what was some appropriate uses of AI, what tools were out there, and then also the importance of never sharing personally identifiable information or any type of student data out on those websites. And then throughout that school year, we did, we created a website or a webpage that our teachers had access to within ClassLink. They could go to to look at approved tools that had went through our application kind of approval process that were safe for our teachers to use. And then last fall, we started offering some AI professional learning for our schools, from our district ed tech coaches. And some of our schools really jumped into that on their own as well and offered their own trainings. We also, within our Microsoft tenant, Microsoft 365 Copilot was added, and that was a very important step, because it created kind of a secure, closed environment where even if something were to be input, it would be contained within our Microsoft tenant, so it would not go out into any type of large language model. And then this past January, we took that working group and really expanded it into our FCS AI and education team. And so we wanted that team to be well-rounded. We have teachers and administrators from every level across our district. We have students as part of that committee, and they've been very forthright and honest about what they're seeing as far as their AI use and how they're using AI. We also have parents that are part of our team. Definitely wanna engage our parents and hear from them. And then our educational technology and instructional coaches, and also central office staff members from various departments are part of that team as well. So some of the things that we did immediately is we took the existing guidance from the Georgia Department of Education. We also reviewed some guidance from different professional organizations that we're a part of, such as COSIN and so forth. Took a look at the guidance from ed tech leaders and then really kind of benchmarked against other districts and saw what districts both near and far were doing surrounding AI. And we also gathered feedback from our school-based team members. We had a great feedback session with Dr. Young's Student Engagement and Leadership Council, and then also got feedback from our parents. And from that, we created a prioritized list of kind of things that we value from FCS. So some of the things that we noted is that everyone is part of the committee, teachers, students, parents, understood that AI use is kind of here and it's not going away, and we need to be responsible in teaching our students how to use AI. But also, we wanted to take a safe, ethical, and responsible approach to that that encourages innovation. We also heard loud and clear from our students and also our teachers, they really wanted clear guidelines for teacher and student usage, for the teachers to be able to understand how students could potentially use it in a safe, responsible way. And then also from our students, they had great concern of their work being potentially flagged as AI when they didn't use AI. They had examples of that they were able to share. We also know that we need to provide learning opportunities for teachers, students, and parents. And this was kind of established back in March, at one of our first meetings. And then the executive order that Mr. Evans referenced really used a lot of that same language. So we, that kind of helped validate some of our work. And then also, we wanna use AI as a tool that can assist teachers with planning administrative tasks, thereby freeing up more time to have those relationships with their students, to engage with their students, and to create more learning opportunities in that way. We broke down into smaller teams within our FCS education team. First and foremost, we had our data privacy, security, and accessibility team. That should be at the front of everything we do, is making sure our data is private, secure, and accessible for all of our students. We also had a guideline and ethics teams that really started looking at what guidelines do we need to establish across our district to encourage that use? But then we also need professional learning to support our teachers in this work. And then also, just as importantly, making sure we're constantly and continuously engaging our stakeholders to hear feedback from our parents, our students, and to get their perspectives as we go. So we kind of created a purpose statement for this team. And it was basically wanted to support our district's strategic plan. We wanna implement AI solutions that foster a safe, connected, and thriving community. And we wanna strive to ensure innovation success for every student and preparing them for a rapidly evolving world. A lot of the tools we saw, as Mr. Evans noted, have evolved quite quickly. And so positioning ourselves to make sure our students and our staff are ready to respond and that we're ready to respond to that, we felt was important. And then from that, we created a number of kind of belief statements surrounding use with AI. First of all, as I mentioned, we want AI to be a learning and teaching tool. It's not gonna replace the value or the role that our educators provide, because our students and teachers are always at the heart of that learning. But it can enhance education, support our teachers, and improve student engagement. We also wanna make sure that we are being ethical and responsible users of AI, ensuring transparency, fairness, and protect our staff and student data. And we want our teachers and students to be able to recognize that any AI-generated content needs to be critically assessed to recognizing type of inaccuracies or biases that may occur, that may produce. And then a lot of this is just reemphasizing some of the things that we've talked about already, supporting our teachers and staff and making sure teachers have the proper training, preparing our students for the future, making sure we have collaboration and community engagement. And then again, using AI as a tool for innovation opportunity, where we're understanding the risks, but also embracing the opportunities that it presents. So some of the work that we have done so far is there is a regulation or surrounding responsible use for technology. We are looking at making addition to that in one of the regulations to really have some language specifically targeted toward AI use. We already described to our students in that regulation how we want them to use technology, but really emphasizing all of that, of making sure students are using approved tools that have been vetted by us in our district to ensure they're age-appropriate and used for educational purposes only, that the students should always follow teacher-guided use of AI tools if they are given the permission from the teacher to use AI tools, to make sure that they provide the proper citations. And again, evaluate the purpose, safety, and trustworthiness of the tools they're using. And then not use any type of AI tools to create any type of harmful, misleading, or offensive, or inappropriate content, because we do have examples of that out there as well, not just in our district, but across the state and nation. And then work in progress, we are creating guidance documents for our teachers, students, and families. I'm gonna show you an example of what we have for our students momentarily. And in that, we wanna give examples of promoted practices. How could you use AI responsibly and effectively? But then also outline some prohibited uses of ways we do not wanna see AI used. And then how can we provide professional learning for our teachers and staff? We looking at having a series of professional learning opportunities for our teachers and staff next school year. We also reviewing our existing digital application approval processes to make sure they're asking the right questions when a tool does incorporate AI, or we're looking at adopting an AI tool. And then also make sure we're following our own information security protocols. And then something that our students felt very passionately about is that there is a fair and consistent process for addressing any type of misuse of AI on their part. They wanna make sure that teachers, we have, teachers have the tools to walk through that process, but to do so in a fair way, respecting our students' work. And so this is just an example of one of the documents we're putting together for our students to provide that. Again, we're putting together guidance for our students, teachers, and also how families can support their students in this manner. So we have kind of our responsible use guidelines referenced. We talked about some promoted AI practices such as brainstorming, helping to communicate, create content. Our students were very honest in how they're using AI, and they noted that they are using it as almost like a personal tutor in some instances. They're able to go generate their own study questions, their own test questions, to prepare them for upcoming assessments and assignments. And then also making sure they're giving credit. But we also wanna steer them away from any type of these prohibited practices such as bullying, becoming overly, over-dependent upon AI, and following our academic integrity statements that we have out there in guidelines. And also to warn them, you know, do not put your personal information on any type of tool that you use. And then also steering them away from any type of unethical type activity. And so our next step is to share these guidance documents that we've put together with our school administrators at the FCS Leadership Retreat in June. We are looking, our parents noted that they appreciate the efforts of schools to have parent information nights. But especially at our middle and high school, parents noted that those are very difficult to attend sometimes with children juggling schedules, sports, activities, and so forth. And so they suggested creating a series of informational videos that parents can go to at any time to get the information they need to help support their students. And then also continue our conversations with our teachers, students, and parents to make sure we're responsive and keeping up to date. And then like anything we do to implement this plan, to reflect on what we're doing and modify it as needed as we move forward to create kind of that agile stance and be able to respond. And so, again, I appreciate the opportunity to share this and happy to answer any questions you may have about the work we've done and, you know, where we're going.
Okay, there it is. Thank you so much for all this work. As Mr. Evans knows, AI is something that I'm actually tasked with in my day job. And so as you're preparing just the guidelines, something to keep in mind is search. Forty-seven percent of consumers are now using ChatGPT and other such agents to do search other than Google. So as we think about the research and that is required, you know, in the classroom, where you would normally use Google, those AI agents are definitely something that we should be prepared to integrate into those guidelines.
Good feedback.
Well, I think, I think it's great that we're taking this subject head-on. I just joined you guys at the GSBA AI Summit, and unfortunately, I had to leave a little bit early, but it was, this is definitely the future. I think with social media and those kind of technologies, we kind of took the approach as a society of, yeah, fantastic, give it to everyone. Which, you know, we know now that was pretty much a bad call. And I think now we're, there's a tendency in society to say, AI bad, AI bad, you know? But AI is actually the future, and it's gonna make our industries and everything more efficient. It's gonna, we're gonna be able to produce things and do things at record pace. I would love to see how, you know, the references to cite the work that it came from in AI, I would love to see how that actually, even grammatically, how do you cite, you know, ChatGPT told me? Or how do, because ChatGPT is also pulling from multiple sources. So I think that'll be interesting, how we, how we figure that part out. I think it's fantastic. Good job, guys.
Thank you very much. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. And it's not all in education, it's AI. All right. I'm blind, what can I tell you? Next up is Mr. Todd McClellan with Review of Policy EEC.
Hello, members of board. Dr. Young, thanks for having me here tonight to, as we go through different policies in the school system. There is just a few proposed changes to this. It doesn't really change the spirit of the policy. It changes just a couple of things and it clarifies them a bit. The first one, if you look at the changes in green, those are the proposed changes. The strikeout in red, those are the ones that we're getting rid of. Basically, it just says, suggested changes, changed it to the equivalent of five lunches, because a lunch is a higher price than breakfast. So we just wanna, it tightens it up and says it's, we had to set a dollar amount in our software, so that basically gives us a dollar amount to shoot for. So we took a higher number that allowed the students to have more negative charges if they did not have a meal, because we do want our kids to eat no matter what. So that's the first one. Same thing below for high school and middle school kids. We changed it to the equivalent of one lunch instead of one meal, because breakfast is for high school kids right now, it's $1.90. We changed it to $3.10. So it gives them the chance to have that lunch if they, they want it. The other thing, the last line there, we just changed it to, we called a courtesy snack, not an alternate snack. So it's just kind of a naming thing. That's where, it's in our industry. That's what it consists of, instead of an alternate snack. So just a, just a name thing.
So the, I do have one question on that one.
Yes, sir.
So changing it to the, can you go back to it for a second?
Absolutely.
I just wanna make sure I understood correctly. Changing it from five meals to the equivalent of five lunches is giving the kids the highest possible?
Correct.
Value?
Yeah. Part of it was, it said, it said five meals. Is that two breakfasts and three lunches? So we just made it five lunches. So that it gives, you know, that basically puts the ceiling at $15. And so it kind of was a little bit unclear before. Is it, is it two breakfasts, which is $1.90? So it makes it, it gives the kids the most opportunity to get fed.
Thank you.
Which is what we really are in the business of feeding kids.
Yep.
Okay? You're welcome. The next policy is the School Systems Wellness Program, which food and nutrition is covered in this. And if you look down to the bullet point, there's just a minor, maybe typo, I would say. We just made the lowercase k, in K-12, we made it an uppercase K. And if you looked into the bullet points, third from the bottom, we just changed a little bit of language there to basically summarize more what was more of the practice in our school system. And then the last bullet from the bottom, it said all traditional schools. As you know, we have some schools that are not considered traditional schools. We have FBA, we have ACE. So those schools still are involved in the, in the school lunch program. So instead of just traditional, we, all of our schools, all of our kids in all of our schools have access to school meals. And that's it. Any questions that I can answer for you? Okay. Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
All right, next up is Future Agenda Items. And I probably should've said this before, but I'll say it in the end. The reason why we're looking at these policies, this year, the Board endeavor, is endeavoring to review every single board policy throughout the course of the year and see what's needed, what updates may be needed or not. Most of them actually don't get changed. So that's, I guess, a good sign, but that's why we're going through these policies. So it's very deliberate, and we're going from top to bottom. We're not cherry-picking any particular policy. All right, next up is Future Agenda Items. I do have one that I'd like to add to a future meeting, which is to begin the public discourse around ESPLUST and the need to have that on the ballot in no and the need to have that on the ballot in November. So if there's no objection, I'd like to have that on one of our future agenda items, and we can determine which is the best one. Anybody else? No? All right. That brings us to our action items, and the first one is the 2526 Student Code of Conduct with Mr. David Fuerbach.
Good evening, board and Superintendent Young. Tonight, I'm here to review the proposed 2025-2026 Code of Conduct. This draft came about from feedback solicited from all Forsyth County schools and their LSC. Every few years, we do ask our school attorneys to review the Code of Conduct. This year, Dr. Salome and Parker Poe did review the Code of Conduct for our department. We had feedback from board member, Mr. Grimes, to recommend some change in language that you will see that we were gladly, we gladly made that change. The changes are very minimal, with strike-throughs representing edits from the 2425 Code of Conduct and yellow highlights indicating new information additions or revisions for the 2526 Code of Conduct. So page one is what you guys see here, and again, it's just the board members. And we added Kim Driesy to our, to our team, so we added her into the first page of the Code of Conduct. Page two. We changed the wording of employee to school officials as defined in the policy JR. You will see this change throughout the Code of Conduct. I won't hit it every time, but you guys will see that change. Right there. And adding the comma. Page three. Thank, thank you, Dr. Young. Page three, as we did with the previous page, we, as school employee, we have changed school personnel also to school official as defined by policy JR. Again, you'll see that change several times throughout this Code of Conduct. Throughout the Code of Conduct, you also see down below where it says Behavior Support Plan. We added Behavior Support Plan to go more aligned with the state and the discipline matrix. This was a recommendation from our attorneys. And I'm going to skip a few pages. You'll see support. I'm going to go to page eight. Actually, page seven. So the bottom of page seven, you're going to see the, the strike-through on the websites. Those websites no longer work for the state, so they were no longer needed in the Code of Conduct, so we, we took those out. Page eight, we did remove the DM codes, and that is, that's the matrix, the discipline matrix right there on number three. Those DM codes, the DM 22, 23, 26, and 28, those are also defined in the OCGA. So it was recommended just to take those out because they are mentioned in the OCGA, which is right above that. For the number four, we did add some language in there. As you can see, it says intentional physical attack against a teacher. We also add the language against other school officials to make that throughout the Code of Conduct. Page 10. Page 10, we added clarifying language to rule 13 in the rule 16. Rule 13 talks about terroristic threats, so as you can see, it mentions what a threat may be. And then for the number 16, electronic entertainment, this deals with students who are filming during situations they should not be filming. Again, you'll see support plan instead of correction plan. Page 14, again, you'll see school official. We did add the language, request a tribunal hearing. In the past, it just said request. So to make it more clarifying, we did say request a tribunal hearing. If you look at the middle of that page, under disciplinary tribunal hearings, we did add the language, a second tribunal request during a student's school career may lead to additional semester consequence at the alternative school. Page 15, we did add information clarifying the course offerings at Gateway Academy. So if a student violates Code of Conduct and attends Gateway Academy, their coursework will be limited to the courses offered by Gateway Academy or Forsyth Virtual Academy, FVA. If a student wishes to take courses beyond those offerings, it would be at the student and family's expense. Again, on page 17, you'll see we changed personnel to officials. Same thing on page 18. And then last page, this is the recommended language of sex instead of gender. This was from our attorneys. Sorry, I skipped a page. Page, that's my fault. Page 20, the Responsible Use Guidelines. This is our most current learner profile. We had the old one. And then as I stated before, the change here on page 22 was changing the word gender to sex, which was recommended to us. Not many changes here, more changes in the language. Are there any questions from the board?
Not so much questions. I do think we will have some questions, but at this point, we have some other changes to the Code of Conduct around cell phones.
Potentially.
Potentially around cell phones, around some other things related to discipline. So I don't know at this point. At this point, we would typically put this out and let it sit for a 30-day review period, but I think that that may be premature at this point.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to table it until next month.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion to table up to the next work session by Mr. McCall and a second by Mr. Grimes. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Fuerbach.
Thank you.
All right, next up is executive session for land and personnel. Do I have a motion to enter executive session? A motion by Mrs. Hoyes, a second by Mr. Grimes. All in favor? Unanimous. All right, we'll be back in an hour and a half, just wait for us. Kidding, kidding. Thank you, guys.